The chairperson today, so if we can-
So, help me out, Aaron.
So, just for we to get started.
We're- I have to be able to talk, huh? We're gonna start the meeting for August 12th, 2020. I'm Maria McElroy, I'm vice chair, acting chair currently. You do roll call first?
Yes.
So, let's do roll call.
May I go in?
Here.
Millie?
Here.
Allie?
Here.
Yes?
Here.
Somebody back to back and you did a little quiet, you was the up next here then?
Here.
Let's go ahead and do pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay? So, at this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to participate in today's public comment via telephone, please call 559-624-7013. You will be connected to the boardroom to address the planning commission in the same manner as if you were here in person. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out on the live audio stream and will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. This meeting can be viewed at the Planning Commission's meetings-Tulare County main page website. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the planning commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for planning commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the planning commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair, which currently is me. In order to be considered by the planning commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on a non-agendized item? What's up? Nobody out there? Velma, is there anyone on email phones? Should we give it a minute?
Yes, please.
Okay. Be a long minute, 10 more seconds. Okay, I think that's a minute. No one, Velma? All right, so we move on to approval of minutes, item number three. Is there a motion to approve the July 22nd, 2020 minutes?
I'll move to approve the minute.
Okay, are we pushing the button? Okay.
And, yes, do we have a second?
Yeah, Wayne seconded it, but you want to verbalize that you seconded it?
Oh, well, I abstained by absence, so put the back up there.
Okay, so Velma, can you reset?
Put the second up there, please.
Okay, so.
So, we have a motion by-
Who made the motion?
You want to- Steve, Commissioner Pearson?
Steve, yeah.
You have to do it again, yeah.
And we have a second by-
It says Gil Aguilar, who's not here. Okay. And I should have mentioned earlier turning off cellphones and all that, because I heard someone's phone going off, so please turn off cellphones. Okay, so can you make the motion again, Steve, if you're doing that, okay?
I'm doing the second.
Yes. It's- It keeps on saying Gil Aguilar is motioning.
He's not here, well, because it can't be based-
Oh, it's his chair, he's in the chair, he's- Okay.
Good thing it isn't a part of it.
Now we can vote? Okay, go ahead, one more time? Okay. Uh, okay.
I'm gonna go to second.
Hey, it worked, yeah? Okay, motion by Commissioner Pearson, seconded by Commissioner Millies, and we can vote. It says seconded on my screen.
Velma, due to technical difficulties, let's go back and do this old school, please, we don't need to use the system.
So, for the rest of the meeting, two?
Yes. Let's wait and see.
Second, Millie's second.
Okay.
You got it?
Um, yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Here.
Yeah.
Okay, the motion is five zero, passed with two absent. Commissioner Whitlatch and Commissioner Aguilar are absent. So, we move on to item four, the consent calendar. We're waiting for-
Through the chair, if you'd like to read that paragraph, that would be fine, on the consent-
The action on all items, yeah, I was getting there, yeah. So, "Action on all items in this section will be taken with one motion and vote unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be pulled from the consent calendar and held over for such discussion. The consent calendar is an untimed item and may be taken up at any time during the course of today's meeting as time allows." So, item A is an extension of time, EOT 20-006 for PPM 17-051, to request for a two-year extension of time for tentative parcel map PPM 17-051 to August 12th, 2022, requested by Clinton and Kathy Johnson, PO Box 10053, Terrabella, California, 93270. The agent is Roberts Engineering, Donna Shamley, PO Box 908, Porterville, California, 93258, for a division of a .15 acre parcel into two parcels, 9,769 square feet, parcel number one, and 12,583 square feet, parcel number two, in the R.A.M. Rural Residential Special Mobile Home Flood Zone X. The site is located on the south side of East Success Drive and the north side of East Springville Avenue, approximately 1,000 feet east of the intersection of East Success Drive and East Springville Avenue in Porterville. The contact is David Alexander, 624-7000. And we are being asked to approve resolution of the planning commission of the County of Tulare, a two-year extension of time for tentative parcel map number 17-051 to August 12th, 2022.
And through the chair, since this is a consent item, you just take a consent item vote.
Okay, are we-
There's no public hearing or anything?
No public hearing or discussion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Try again? Okay, Wayne, did you second it, or is that automatic?
I did.
You did, okay. So, can everyone vote?
We're up to it.
Looks like it.
Okay, so we have five yes, zero no, two absent. Do I need to read the names of who's absent?
Well, yeah, that's preferred, but just as long as we indicate that Mr. Elliott made the motion, it was seconded.
Okay, so the motion passed for the consent calendar moved by Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Commissioner Millies, with Chairman Whitlatch and Commissioner Aguilar absent. Okay, so now we're moving on to item five. Do I open the hearing before or after I read this?
You can open the public hearing now, and that is preferred.
Okay, so we're gonna open a public hearing and start with item five. This is for the parcel map public hearings. Action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requested it be pulled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items. To members of the public, if you wish to participate in today's public hearing via telephone, please call 559-624-7013. You will be connected to the boardroom to address the planning commission in the same manner as if you were here in person. If you choose not to call in, you may also participate by submitting an email as the item is being heard. Emails should include the sender's name and address for the record. Emails should include the following in the subject, agenda item number, and the agenda item number that you're speaking on, and can be sent to the clerk of the planning commission at planningcommission@co.tulare.ca.us. So, that's P.L.A.N.N.I.N.G.C.O.M.M.I.S.S.I.O.N. at co.tulare.ca.us. Every effort will be made to read your comment into the record, but some comments may not be read due to time limitations. Comments received after the public hearing has closed will be made part of the record if received before the end of the meeting. That concludes the instructions for today's public hearing. Okay, so then we are going to start with item 5A, tentative parcel map number PPM 20-013, Salvador Murillo J. Frank Gomez. So, it's for a categorical exemption and tentative parcel map to divide a 22.82 acre parcel into two parcels, along with a financing parcel. Parcel one equals 2.44 acres, parcel two equals 16 acres, and parcel number 2A is 4.38 acres, with a final map waiver in the AE 20 Exclusive Agriculture 20-Acre Minimum Zone, the site located at 6990 Avenue 400, Dinuba, California, 93618, approximately 1.2 miles east of Road 80, southwest of Dinuba, APN 029-290-002 and 004. Contact is David Alexander, 624-7000, and it says one motion, so there's multiple points?
No, just one motion, but through the chair, if we could ask for any comments at this time, and then close the public hearing if there are none.
So, there won't be a presentation then?
No, not for parcel maps.
All right, are there any members of the audience or anyone participating by phone or online that would like to comment? I will, you know, ask you to speak at this time and will give you a minute if you're calling from not in the room. Velma, were there any comments? Okay, so then-
Chair, I've got a question on this, just for my clarification, and maybe David could, Alexander could answer this, but I see we've got an AE 20 parcel here, and I understand the home retention, but I'm not sure why there's a need for a financing parcel, which basically is just used to finance, secure, building another home. So, it looks to me it's just an end run here to subdivide it AE 20, 20 into multiple parcels here.
Can we, is David here, can you come up and answer some questions?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Ed, I wanted to ask something like that, too, yeah, okay. Good morning.
David, if you could speak into the microphone.
Yes, sorry about that, Chairman Commissioners. The way I believe this would go forward is it's for family members, so to be able to have a home site, but also be able to, that's separate from the farm, because if you look at the shape of the map, the parcel is, has a square with a little jutted out, so they're taking this one off for a home site, and then the new financing parcel is right next to the side. I don't know their future plans of selling the farm, I can't speak to that, I can't speak to that, but I believe that's the situation.
They're already allowed a second home for the family, right, on the parcel? The existing parcels, and I understand the home retention, there could even be a second home on that one, too.
So, why would they need to divide it, then?
They did not ask their motives.
Okay.
Well, through the chair, I think the agent, Frank Gomez, is here if you'd like to discuss that.
Okay, if he would like to come forward.
Thank you, David.
Good morning, my name is Frank Gomez, 452 Bates, Dinuba, California. And basically, how this all started, as you know, basic parcel, I think 2A, if I'm mistaken, is basically a 20-acre parcel, short 20. So, basically, what they want to do in the future is for a family member to allow to build a home there, basically. So, the property owner, or the home site, the existing one right now, was on a separate parcel. In order to create another parcel there, technically, to me, it is a legal 20-acre parcel excluding all the right of ways, so basically, they could have done a parcel map before.
Can you speak a little closer to the mic, please? And I didn't ask, but if you could just say your name?
I did, I said Frank Gomez.
That's why I didn't hear.
I did say it, so.
Okay, can you say it again, please? Because-
Frank Gomez.
Frank Gomez, okay, got it.
Okay, 452 Bates, Dinuba, California.
Okay.
All right, so basically, in the future, they want to build a home there for their family member. Originally, they were gonna want, they had wanted to do that a while back, but then they had to build, they bought a home in Dinuba instead of building it there. So, that's what they wanted to do, is build their home there for the family members. And that's for financing, not to divide the property, just for financing purposes. When you don't want to accomplish the whole 20 acres when you're gonna build a home in the future. So, it's not out of the ordinary, so it's typically, they're not dividing, they still want to keep the farm, okay? And if they do sell it, then later on, you just can't come in and sell it, you have to divide the property.
Well, right, if they come back in the future, we usually start with a certificate of compliance and move forward on a separate parcel map at that time. But they need, obviously, to answer the question, they need the financing, and they can't do that without the financing parcel. So, that's a separate issue. It's allowed by our codes, for financing purposes.
Do you have any more questions for Mr. Gomez? Thank you. Does, Velma, is there anyone who's commenting? Should we give it a minute, or is that already included in?
Give him a minute, didn't we?
Give him-
A minute, okay, all right.
More than a minute, by now.
Any comments or questions for my fellow commissioners? Okay? Does someone want to make a motion? Okay, so is anybody making a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the categorical exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and the state sequel guidelines pursuant to Title 14, you know that part, pertaining to the common sense rule and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 20-013 with a final map waiver.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a vote of four yes, one no, moved by John Elliott, our Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Wayne Millies.
No, no.
With, what's that?
What was the mistake on Millies, because I think Steve made the second?
Yeah, it was supposed to be Steve, it says Millies. So, how do we do that?
For the record, Steve Pearson made the second.
Okay, so for the record, Steve Pearson made the second, so moved by Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Steve Pearson for the record, with the absence of Commissioner Whitlatch and Commissioner Aguilar. Okay, so we close this hearing and then move on to the next?
You could say the motion passed for both.
The motion passed for one.
Okay, good.
Okay. So, we move on to, so do I close that one and then open the next one?
You closed that hearing, so we move on to the next one.
Okay, so we move on to, close that hearing and move on to item number six. This is a public hearing. To members of the public, if you wish to participate in today's public hearing via telephone, please call 559-624-7013. You will be connected to the boardroom to address the planning commission in the same manner as if you were here in person. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. And I'd also ask if you're coming up here in the boardroom, please speak into the microphone versus away from it. Your statements will go out on the live audio stream and will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. The timer will be set to three minutes, so please adhere to the time limit. If you choose not to call in, you may also participate by submitting an email as this item is being heard. Emails should include the sender's name and address for the record. Emails should include the following in the subject, agenda item number, and can be sent to- And the agenda item number for this first item is going to be item A, special use permit number PSP 20-031. And for the second item, which we're not hearing yet, it's going to be tentative parcel, item B, tentative parcel map final site plan number PPM 20-019, PSR 20-002. Emails should be sent to the clerk of the planning commission at planningcommission@co.tulare.ca.us. Every effort will be made to read your comment into the record, but some comments may not be read due to time limitations. Comments received after the public hearing has closed will be made part of the record if received before the end of the hearing. That concludes the instructions for today's public hearing. So, we have item A, which is special use permit number PSP 20-031. Jose Gomez, Roberts Engineering, seeking a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act and authorize an agricultural service establishment on a three-acre portion of a 40.2-acre parcel located in the AE 40 Exclusive Agricultural 40-Acre Minimum Zone. The site is located at 19399 Avenue 104, outside Terrabella, and the contact is April Hill, 624-7108. Morning.
Good morning, Chairman McElroy and Commissioners. My name is April Hill, Tulare County RMA Planning. The applicants, Gomez Harvesting, request a special use permit to authorize an ag service establishment on a three-acre portion of a 40.2-acre parcel.
Um, let me, I didn't open the public hearing, right?
You can do that after she's done, but yes.
Okay, thanks, sorry, April, I'm learning, all right?
Yes, we do prefer these days to open it up immediately, but-
So, officially, open it, I'm opening the public hearing, and please continue, April, thank you.
Thank you. Lot to keep track of. Approval and compliance with the conditions of approval will resolve a code compliance violation for structures built without permits and a business operating without a special use permit. The applicants acquired the property and began operating the pistachio harvesting equipment storage yard in 2006. Five employees work from the site Mondays through Saturdays. The business employs 15 workers year-round and 40 during the pistachio harvest season. Here is the hearing notification map. This project was noticed in the Sun Gazette according to the law with a 10-day comment period, and no comments were received. The site is located outside any urban or hamlet boundary. The site and surroundings are zoned AE 40. The ag service establishment requires an approved special use permit. Because the parcel is larger than five acres and the applicant does not live on the subject site, the use does not qualify as a contractor's storage yard. Access to the site is indirect to Avenue 104 via dedicated private access easement established by 1976 parcel map. The applicant estimated maximum daily trips will average 16 arrivals and departures, with four by residents and six by employees. County Public Works did not require conditions of approval. County Public Works did not require conditions of approval. The property is subject to the Rural Valley Lands Plan and designated for Valley agriculture. The project is consistent with the relevant policies of the general plan. The aerial photograph shows the three-acre portion of the 40-acre property, which contains two mobile homes, one which is used as the office, a storage shop building, seat train storage containers, and the equipment storage yard. The remaining 37 acres contain orchard trees. Surrounding properties also contain agriculture and scattered rural residences. The applicant has submitted building permit applications for most of the as-built structures. He plans to construct the new 80-by-130 metal structure. Condition of approval will limit operating hours on the site to between 6:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., or one half hour before sunrise, one half hour after sunset, Monday through Saturdays. Stored on the site include two semi-trucks, four pickups, 24 harvesters, three fork slips, three tractors. Environmental health requires a hazardous materials business plan for the fuel storage, and the fire department recommended standard conditions of approval for a site outside the state responsibility area. Project has been determined to be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and consistent with state secret guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15301 regarding existing facilities. Property contains dwelling, accessory buildings, and a contractor's equipment storage yard. The ag service establishment began in about 2007, and the subject's site was previously disturbed by agriculture. No expansion or construction is proposed. Project will not result in significant impacts and will not require additional public services. The additional section for this secret categorical exemption is Section 15303 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. This ends staff's report if you would like to open the public hearing.
Are there any questions for April?
Just go on, April. So this has been going on since 2006, and we're just now bringing them into compliance?
Yes.
Are there any penalties? It seems like you benefited a long time without having to pay fees or anything.
No, there are no penalties.
All right. Just a thought.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do they not have a large structure that they're going to build?
Yes, the...
80-by-130?
Yes.
That's a big building?
Pardon?
That's a big building.
Yes.
But on 40 acres, right?
Yeah.
It's all going to fit on the 30, on the three-acre site.
And that has to meet its own compliance?
Building permits.
Permits and all that? Yeah, okay. Any more questions for April? Were there any comments or people wanting to participate by phone? Vilma? No? So since I already noticed them, I don't have to count a minute now, or do I?
We can give them a minute if you would like.
Okay.
That's within your discretion.
So we'll give anybody who's participating remote a minute, just on the off-chance that they want to comment on this. So starting now. I don't know if they'll have questions for you, April, but yeah. That's a minute. Seeing, was there any input from the public, Vilma? Okay, no comment from the public who are not present today. Thank you, April. Is there anyone from the audience who wants to comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none, close the public hearing, okay? And move on to discussion with the Commissioners. Is there any discussion?
No.
Well, it seems like it's more compliance than anything else.
Yeah. Well, the important thing is it's, we're getting it on board and it's coming in, and that's fine. That's why we're here.
Okay. So shall we move on? Does anybody have a motion on this item?
I've already moved.
Oh, I have full screen, so I don't see it.
Oh.
Okay. All right. So it's been moved by Commissioner Diaz, seconded by Steve Pearson. Commissioner Pearson. Really. Not Mr. Millies. Backwards. Right? Okay. All right. So please vote on the item. I think we're still waiting on somebody. Okay. So the item was moved by Commissioner Diaz, seconded by Commissioner Pearson, and has passed with a vote of five yes, zero no, zero abstentions, two absences of Commissioner Whitlatch and Commissioner Aguilar. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So this was closed hearing already, and we move on to the next item. Okay. So the Item B is the Tentative Parcel Map Final Site Plan Number PPM 20-019, PSR 20-002, for the Badger Creek Development LLC, AW Williams Engineering, a categorical exemption to authorize Tentative Parcel Map Final Site Plan Number PPM 20-019 PSR, a revision to Tentative Subdivision Map Number TSM 793 PSR to divide a 370, is that, what's the Y at the end?
Plus or minus.
Okay. Plus or minus acre parcel into four parcels, plus a remainder parcel. Parcel number one equals 71 acres. Parcel number two equals 15 acres. Parcel number three equals 18 acres. Parcel number four equals 68 acres. And remainder parcel equals 198 acres. And two, Final Site Plan Special Use Permit Number PSR 20-002 PSP, to authorize the development of a 67-unit short-term vacation rental facility in the PDFM 217 Zone. The site is located on the east side of State Route 245, which is Pinehurst Road, at Mountain Road M-465, which is Whittaker Forest Road, east of D-254 Hogback Drive, north of Badger and south of the Fresno-Tulare County line. Contact is April Hill, 624-7108. And this is going to be in three motions. So we're going to open the public hearing and get input from Ms. Hill.
Thank you again. Good morning, Chairman McElroy and Commissioners. My name is April Hill, Tulare County Planning. Badger Creek Development requests that your commission accept not a categorical exemption but an addendum to a negative declaration previously prepared for Tentative Subdivision Map Final Site Plan Number TSM 793/PSR, and approved Tentative Parcel Map PPM 20-019/PSR, a revision to the Tentative Subdivision Map 793, and Final Site Plan Special Use Permit The, probably the projects were noticed according to the law. One parcel in Fresno County and the rest in Tulare County.
If there's a parcel in Fresno County, does it have to be noticed in Fresno County?
Yes, sir. Going back a little here. The Tentative Parcel Map will allow the division of a 370-acre parcel into four parcels plus a remainder with final map required. The project qualifies for a final, minor revision to the Tentative Subdivision Map as the number of lots are reduced and the use changes from residential to short-term residential, vacation rentals. Final Site Plan will allow further development of a short-term vacation rental facility called Sequoia Resort on a two-acre portion of a proposed 71-acre parcel that will be created by the Tentative Parcel Map PPM 20-019. The project uses existing infrastructure and building pads from the 1970s to 1990s Synanon mixed-use development. The applicant plans to add 63 additional vacation rental units to an existing four units and replace four approved, replace 13 approved recreational vehicle spaces with rental units for a total of 67 vacation rentals. In the meantime, this was a latecoming idea, the applicant asks to prepare 20 of the sites for RV spaces until he has funds to construct the permanent rental sites. The RV park, RV spaces are considered a park and will be monitored by both the State Department of Housing and Community Development and by the county. HCD requires an emergency preparedness plan for each, for each year. The property is located off State Route 245, just south of Fresno County line, outside any urban, urban boundary. Now, Caltrans determined that the culvert running under SR 245 needs to be extended beyond the edge of the pavement and requires the property owner to dedicate the extension area to Caltrans for construction and maintenance of the culvert. Ah, sorry. Subject site is Zone PDFM 217, planned development, foothill combining, special mobile home, 217,000 square foot minimum. Final Site Plan was required for a land division in the F-zone. The F-zone also requires the Planning Commission approve special use permit for private or commercial recreation area uses, businesses and associated facilities, including overnight lodging facilities. The PD Zone requires an approved final site plan for any special use permit, and therefore there is findings included in the resolution for the site plan review process, for a use permit, for a plan development, and for a project in the F-zone.
So just for the record, what is the zoning on this property?
PDFM.
Correct.
The site is located in the Badger Elderwood Development Corridor of the Foothill Growth Management Plan and is designated for foothill mixed-use. The proposed project is consistent with the relevant goals of the Foothill Growth Management Plan. And conditions of approval include compliance with the F-zone land alteration requirements regarding grading, erosion, drainage, and vegetation removal. A consistency document is included in the agenda packet for both consistently with the FGMP and with the general plan. Project is also consistent with relevant Tulare County general plan elements, including planning framework, land use element, economic development, scenic landscapes, environmental resources management element, air quality, health and safety, water resources, transportation and circulation, public facilities and services element. Not required are a biological study, a cultural assessment, noise study, traffic study, or right-to-farm notice. The aerial photo shows the existing development on proposed parcel one of PPM 20-019, a minor revision of TSM 793. The Board of Supervisors approved TSM 793 and a negative declaration in July of 2007 to divide the property into 74 lots, 68 of which were to be residential. A final map was submitted in 2018 before the expiration date, and the applicant formally withdrew the final map and variance in March of 2020. Surroundings include grazing land, scattered residences, commercial uses. To the north is Fresno, of the Fresno County-Tulare County line, there's open space, residences along Hogback Road. Into the east are PDFM 217 Zone properties in the Sierra Glen area, consisting of the Sierra Glen School, a mobile home park, gas station, grocery store, restaurant, post office, scatred residences, and vacant land. Hartland Christian Camp is also located to the northeast. To the south are properties also in the PDFM 217 Zone that contain residences, a motel restaurant, convenience store, and gas station. To the west, across State Route 245 are properties Zoned PDFM 217 that also include the California Department of Forestry Badger Fire Station. Subject property is within the state responsibility area where wildland fires risks and hazards are substantial. The, the development includes seven fire hydrants. The applicant installed a 50,000-gallon water storage tank for fire suppression in 2018, and they plan to install a second 50,000-gallon water tank. County Fire Department requires compliance with the state responsibility area requirements. Existing buildings must have a recent fire life safety inspection to ensure they meet code requirements. Future building permits will be reviewed to determine the need for additional fire protection measures. Fire Department sent additional conditions last week, and those have been passed out to your commission. About 13 more conditions. To the Tentative Parcel Map. The larger parent parcel was legally created in 1996 as 377.41-acre parcel two of Tentative Parcel Map PPM 96-033. The current Tentative Parcel Map slash Final Site Plan, PPM 20-019, will allow the division into four parcels plus a remainder with a final map required. Again, the parcel, parcel one will be 71 acres, parcel two will be 15 acres, parcel three will be 18 acres, parcel four will be 68 acres, and the remainder parcel will be 198 acres. If the remainder parcel is developed in the future, the owner must first apply for a certificate of compliance. The project qualifies for a minor revision to Tentative Subdivision Map, TSM 793, as the number of lots was reduced and the use changes from residential to short-term residential slash vacation rentals. Environmental Health Services noted that the new septic systems for the proposed development on parcel one will be located on a different parcel, parcel four, than the structures that it will serve. And if an off-site septic system is intended, the EHSD recommends a maintenance agreement, a maintenance easement and agreement for the off-site system. Here's a detailed shot of the 13-space recreational vehicle park authorized by special use permit PSP 18-025. Again, the applicant will prepare additional RV spaces, not necessarily in this detail, where future rental cabins will be constructed in order to generate income for constructing, for construction. Here is the overall site plan. As stated earlier, the applicant plans to add 63 vacation rental units to the, to the existing four units and replace 13 approved RV sites with rental units for a total of 67 vacation rental units. The new units will be constructed on building pads that are already graded and established, dating back to Synanon days. The applicant will also construct a new office, a community building, swimming pool, showers and changing rooms building, a sixth septic system, a second 50,000-gallon water storage tank for fire suppression, one new septic tank leach line system, propane tanks, modified driveway. Development will be in phases with 14 to 21 new units to be constructed as soon as permitting is complete, and 42 additional units built as demand dictates. We've got a full-time caretaker on the site. The number of full-time employees will increase from two or three to five or six at full build-out. The applicant anticipates daily trips to increase from 35 to about 184. And that, those trips are less than the 350 anticipated for residences made possible for the completion, by, by the possible completion of TSM 793. Regarding cultural resources, the site is not on a bluff or hillside with rocky outcroppings. However, Badger Creek does run through the property. The site has been developed with various types of uses since before 1976. No building improvements, residences, accessory buildings, or any activity associated with construction are permitted between, within 100 feet of Badger Creek. Conditions of approval require all grading or excavation to cease if any archaeological resource... resources or human remains are discovered. No further development shall take place until appropriate recovery measures, if necessary, have been completed. In addition, the owner shall include a standard inadvertent discovery clause in every construction contract to inform contractors of the conditions of approval. This project qualifies for an addendum to a negative declaration previously prepared for tentative subdivision map slash final site plan TSM seven-ninety-three PSR. It does not qualify for category exemption, as the project will result in an increase of more than twenty-five-hundred square feet of structures and may have effects on the environment. An addendum to an adopted negative declaration may be prepared if only minor technical changes or additions are necessary, or if significant effects not discussed in the original document call for preparation of a subsequent negative declaration. The sixty-three new vacation rentals and other structures will be constructed on ground previously disturbed by the private mixed-use development Synanon between, between the early nineteen-seventies and nineteen-nineties. The Fire Department, Environmental Health Services Division, and Planning Branch require conditions of approval, and we've carried forward some of the conditions of approval from TSM seven-ninety-three. That ends staff's, staff's report. Do you have any questions for me or for the Agent Ellen Williams?
I have one question, I don't know if my other fellow commissioners do, but I have one question because I'm looking at the left side of this Exhibit A, April, and there's a big, what looks like a big white box, I can't see how close the creek is to whatever the proposed buildings are. And my question, as has been with other developments, is what is the slope in this area? And how, what's the volume of water in this creek? Is it a live creek? I don't know Badger Creek, so I, you know, have a lot of questions about it. I'm, I'm just wondering what the slope is and how close would these buildings actually be to the creek at that point?
I can tell you the slope.
There's no contour.
I am not sure of how intermittent the Badger Creek is, or whether it's a, whether it's a perennial one. The soils are ranged between fifteen and thirty percent slopes.
Okay.
And of course, it's always preferred to go to the flat spaces when they grade and develop, so.
And they have to be at least a hundred feet from the edge of whatever drop?
Yes.
Or is it like a drop all the way down and they're counting that as the hundred feet?
I don't think it's as steep in that area, but I'd have to, we'd have to talk with somebody more familiar with the actual site.
Okay. All right, any questions from my fellow commissioners?
Yeah, I didn't see, I know that you said there's four existing cabins there now. Is that what's going to be built in the future, just more cabins?
Yes, they're going to be building cabins on the sites that were formerly, formerly had mobile homes on them.
Yeah.
And the actual, the, the existing cabins are in this square here, two, three, four.
They're very light, kind of grayed out.
I think, you know, this Synanon thing, which is kind of an interesting part of the local history of this part of Tulare County, I'm just wondering if there should be some kind of addendum reported in there, at least a chronology of the development, what was there, and how it related to the, you know, this drug rehabilitation thing that it was set up for in the first place? Because they're going to change that all over, and I think there needs to be at least some documentation of what was there before they build this new place. That's just my own personal opinion, because I've been up there a lot, and every time you go through there, there's just no inkling of what the heck went on there, and it's kind of an interesting place.
Well, just for the record, I did want to make a couple of points here. As far as the variance that was approved with the, just for the record, approved as part of the tentative map allows us to move away from the two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand acre minimums. The developer himself is here, and so the engineers, just to give you a little bit more background, we've kind of arrived at this place because they've had so many difficulties with the Department of Real Estate doing the CCNRs on this, and, you know, I couldn't believe it at first, but the Department of Real Estate really wanted them to go from community water systems to forming a CSD on this property. So, you know, the Water Board probably got out ahead of the Department of Real Estate, and we've met with them several times to figure out a way to get around that without necessarily coming back through with another map to revise the condition, but regardless, the Department of Real Estate was not going to let go of that. So, the only possible way to still derive some value out of this is to, to go to a site plan and do these cabins, which makes a lot of business sense, and the market might not have necessarily been there for individual lots, but the market might be there for, for such a use, and this planning commission has allowed them to move forward on a use permit for those RVs while they were trying to work out some of these map issues. So, to extend that out for a few more RV units, that doesn't really change much, but the fact is, I forget how many years they've been in, in process here, we're probably closing in on more than a decade. So, this helps them move forward quickly with the, the map, and hopefully they can still make some use out of the investment they've put into this property. And, you know, as far as, you know, your, your comments, Mr. Elliott, I would not necessarily add a condition, but add a, a finding to the, the resolution, saying that that was suggested by Mr. Elliott, and if they can document, take pictures of what's there now before it's removed, and give it some semblance of that, then I, I think that would be, would be fine, but the addended neg deck does cover all the archaeological aspects of this, of this project, so.
I don't think we want to find what might be buried there.
Well, yeah, we just want to take some pictures and document what you're talking about without digging, digging too deep.
No, it's, the reason why I say that is because I meet people all the time, that that's the reason they came to Tulare County, was because of that project, and they're scattered all over.
Any other questions for April before we move on to public testimony? Did I open the hearing? Okay, good, all right. Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this project or this item? Okay, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you, April.
Good morning, planning commissioners. My name is Allen Williams, I'm with AW Engineering, seven-twenty-four Ben Maddox Way here in Vasoya. Also in attendance with me is Mr. Reinhardt Hessie, who is a part-owner in the Badger Creek Development, and both of us are available to answer any questions that you may have that may help understand better our proposal to you for approval. I will clarify a couple of things if I could. The slope of the property varies. It is pretty steep along the banks of the creek. We're going to honor the buffer zones with the new development. There's lots of opportunities for surface drainage across the property for, to improve the water quality before it discharges to the creek. And, you know, this site plan is exactly what was approved in two thousand and seven. We're, only difference is our boundaries, you know, we had a boundary with each lot and we were going to sell, but this project is, as a whole, is the same project that we proposed, thousand, twelve hundred square foot cabins, permanent structures. The owner would like to, in the interim, do some more RV parking until he can get the units established and constructed. And like Aaron mentioned earlier, we, he, he was thinking about selling the lots, that's the way, that's the reason we filed the final map, but since then, there's been a lot of interest for rentals. He's had an increase in demand for RV parking since we received your approval on the special use for RV parking a couple of years ago and received HCD approval, but he, the increase is just, there's, there's a long list of people wanting to come and use it for a short-term vacation spot, so the demand is there, he sees a, a, a good revenue stream source for him, and it's, it's what he believes is the best use of the property right now. So, with that, I'll say, you know, if you have any questions that I could answer, or the owner, we'll be glad to answer those.
One question I have, because I'm not sure if I heard right or not, sometimes I'm a little deaf, but there's, you mentioned, I believe, discharge into the creek. Would that, where would that discharge come from?
Yeah, there's existing storm drain structures already on site from the Synanon development, and the way that development occurred was much, much more intense than what we're proposing, so we're utilizing the existing infrastructure that collects the water and discharges two ways, either directly into the creek or straight over to the lake that's upstream of the creek.
And is that discharge from rainwater, or is it discharge from septic?
It's storm water.
Storm water?
Yes.
Okay, but not, I don't know, it's not a word, I'm going to make a word up, Aaron, a chemicalized water?
No, no.
Yeah.
It's just surface storm water.
Storm water, okay. And, and you said that you were going to have some kind of treatment for the water before it gets into the creek?
Well, the surface, we have, we have a lot of grass areas, and when it runs off the paved areas, it runs into the grass and is able to filter some of the water before it gets into the storm drain system, so it, it's naturally filtering the way it surface drains.
Have you looked into like gravel drainage or anything like that? Because grass, if you treat it with chemicals and pesticides, you know, to, I don't know, help it grow or fertilizer all that, that can impact the creek water.
Yeah, we're not expecting too much to generate from the new development, but we could look into that and see if that could help our quality, but we're not really expecting too many surface things to go into the water, but we can look at things that we could help.
All right. Any questions from my fellow commissioners?
I've got a comment. I think it's a great reuse of that property, and I know last year, in three overs, when we had a normal vacation season, we had tons of European people who loved to go through that Badger area, many of them are in the vans and the vacation rental vehicles, and this would be an ideal stop for them on their way to Kings Canyon, and I think, you know, I commend you, I think it's thinking very progressively into the future, and it's going to tap into a good market for you. I just think it's important to tell the story, not only for the documentation of the site, but also those people they're going to visit. I think they're going to be real interested in that.
What's the elevation there?
Three thousand feet.
There you go.
Okay, if, if you come and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Reinhardt Roland Hesser, I'm the owner. I bought that property in two thousand and four.
Okay.
I went through planning commission, we had a tentative map approval, we tried, then we, there was the big recession, two thousand and eight, then we wanted to do the, the, the final map on the tentative map approval, but then with Aaron Block's idea and concept, it turned out to be, to have just a subdivision of four lots and the remainder, and then have a use permit, a use permit on, on property number one. So, and, and to Synanon, I'm, I'm very aware of Synanon, of course, I, I met all the people who were the engineers of Synanon, so I'm, I'm very familiar with them, there's even a mural still hanging in the, in the hangar building, and they have their print shops, the, the print shop is still there, the warehouse and the print shop, so we want to keep that, we, we don't want to demolish it, but, I mean, the, the focal points of, of Synanon, we want to keep. Even if it was the rattlesnake story and, and, and quite an interesting time, but, but I think history is history and, and we want, and, and I know it was, at some time, it was the biggest employer in Tulare County. Now with the, with the, that's why we have the RV spots, the RV spots are important in the moment, the people don't want to go to vacation rentals in the moment. I mean, also, they want their RV, so, so we have to be a little bit flexible. In the beginning, I think we have to, to create some more RV spots, and then later, but it's on the same pads, on the same septic system, and, and everything is used which is there, and, and then, then we will later build the, my idea is I want no trailer homes, I want really solid-built, small cabins on a good foundation, environmentally friendly and things like that. So if you have any questions, let me know.
I, I've heard the word, is it Synanon?
Synanon.
Is that the organization?
Yeah.
Synanon, what's, yeah.
Synanon. Synanon Church. It was a drug rehab, but it, it went a little bit culty.
I wasn't in this area during the heyday, but what is it? I don't even know, I don't know what it is. What is Synanon?
It was a rehab.
Like Echelon over Santa Cruz?
It was a rehab.
Was it a cult?
Well, there were some cult associations with it.
I mean, I've, I've heard all different terms.
Yeah, there were some. I, I.
So historic. I guess, why, why is it so historic?
If you have one person speaking at a time, that'd be great, so Chairman Millies, please finish speaking.
No, I'm not the chairman, but I will ask.
Chairman, sorry, I'm brain-dead right now, but you're still chairman to me, so Commissioner Millies, if you would finish speaking.
I don't want to outshout anybody. So, so what is Synanon, please?
I don't know it in detail, I only looked up what is in the internet, and it was a drug rehab in the beginning, very professional, they even had a place in Santa Monica, and they did very good work, but then later it went a little bit cultish, that's what, what I heard. And then it was hierarchy, there was a German guy, I'm German too, so I don't know what his name, I forgot it now, but, but he was just the ruler, and, and everybody had to, had to listen and, and, and obedience and things like that, so, and, and then the reason why it deteriorated was also they had, had business there, they didn't pay taxes, and then they were closed down.
This was in the seventies, yeah.
It started in the seventies.
In the eighties.
In the eighties.
Yeah, so, so it started in the seventies, were closed down in the eighties, and then the whole property deteriorated, it was, was the building market for all the people up there who needed a faucet or things like that.
Okay, got it, got it, got it.
Really, I have pictures, so I have history of the after Synanon, and I can show you pictures.
Well, I had to ask, because I, I heard the terminology, and everyone seems to know what it is, but I, I wasn't around here, so. There was an organization over in Santa Cruz called Echelon.
Yeah.
It was sort of a, you know, meditation and that kind of thing.
New age.
Yeah, so I'm just curious. Thank you.
If any questions, let me know.
Are there any more, before you take off, Mr. Hess, hang on, any more questions for the applicant?
No.
Thank you. Was there any input from the public, Velma?
No.
No input from the public, not present. Aaron, anything else? Because I, I interrupted a little bit.
No, I think that, that's enough, we're, we're good.
Okay, all right, so we're, this is in three separate motions to...
You might close the public.
Yeah, we're going to close the public hearing first, so it's closed, so then it's time for any comments, follow-up comments, or motions from, on the first item from my fellow commissioners.
Well, I just think it's spot-on, and I think they need to go forward, it's a great reuse of the place, but I just caution, let's not forget what was there and the history that happened there.
Make your motion then, John.
All right, I'll begin with the, to approve and accept an addendum to negative declaration previously prepared for tentative subdivision map, final site plan number TSM seven-nine-three PSR, for tentative parcel map, final site plan number PPM twenty dash zero-one-nine PSR, and final site plan special use permit for PSR twenty dash zero-zero-two PSP.
The button.
If I could find it.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. Are we waiting on someone? Okay, so the motion passed, the first motion was made by Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Commissioner Pearson, passes five zero. So five yes, zero no, zero abstentions, two absences. The absences are of Commissioner Whitlatch and Commissioner Aguilar. So.
Keep going, John.
Someone's speaking up.
Okay, I'll go to approve tentative parcel map, final site plan number PPM 20-019 PSR, revision to tentative subdivision map, number TSM 793, located in the PDFM 217 zone between State Route 245 and Hogback Drive, north of Whittaker Forest Road in Badger and south of the Fresno-Tulare County line.
Okay, is there a motion? A second? All right, please vote.
Okay, who wants to take the last one?
Go ahead.
All right, this motion was made by Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Commissioner Pearson. It passes five yes, zero no, zero abstentions with the absence of Commissioner Whitlatch and Commissioner Aguilar. Now we've got one more motion.
All right, I'll go for the hat trick.
Okay.
Approve, conditionally approve final site plan special use permit number PSR 20-002 PSP to authorize the development of a 67-unit short-term vacation rental facility in the PDFM 217, planned development foothill combining special mobile home, 217,000 square foot minimum zone, and Badger-Alderwood Development Corridor, located on the east side of State Route 245, north of Whittaker Forest Road in Badger and south of the Fresno-Tulare County line, and thank goodness for cataract surgery.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, please vote. Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Commissioner Pearson. It passes with five yes, zero no, zero abstentions, two absences of Commissioner Whitlatch and Commissioner Aguilar. Okay, thank you. Thank you, commissioners. So now we move on to information and discussion item, the environmental justice workshop presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Auf Wiedersehen. Yeah. That was goodbye in German. I speak German.
I think we figured that out.
I majored in German. Yeah, du kannst.
My dad used to yell at me, guten Himmel.
We're talking about, just for the record, because the mics are on, we were talking about who can speak German. And he said, Commissioner Pearson said he can speak a little, and I said I majored in it.
Oh, wow.
So, there we go. All right, so we have, I know Arlen, but for those who don't, could you please just mention your name and intro again?
Yes, Arlen Benavides, 1826 Tosi Avenue. And I speak a little, I just know how to say hello in German. Wie geht's dir? So Aaron today asked me to make a presentation about some of the work that we've been doing with the environmental justice element. And I would like to start with the legislative context of EJ. As some of you may know, EJ began, or government started thinking about environmental justice around the late, early and late 1990s, when state departments were designated to look over jurisdictions to make sure that environmental justice issues were being addressed. And then with SB 535 in 2012, we have the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund, which collected funds from facilities that were releasing pollution or toxic emissions and allocating those resources to disadvantaged communities. And then we have AB 617 in 2017, which was to address air quality. And AB 1628, which is a new assembly bill. And this one is more about the outreach and public engagement with all income, races, and national origins. And most important is SB 1000, which states what environmental justice is, the definition of it, and also some of the requirements that are needed to be addressed in environmental justice element. The planning process. The diagram that you're looking at is a diagram produced by the California Environmental Justice Alliance. And as you can see, research was, is the first phase. And the last, for the previous 11 months, this is what we've been really working on and focusing on. What are the existing community or what are the existing conditions in disadvantaged communities? The second phase is engagement. And this, there was some challenges in this area or in this phase due to the COVID-19 pandemic. However, with some advancement, we, obviously, we established the Environmental Justice Committee. And through that, we're being able to come up with strategic public engagement strategies. And lastly, the development of all sections and the approval of the element. So originally, Tulare County wanted to follow the model of Sacramento County. And they divided their element in two phases. The phase one was just to allocate or to assemble what are the existing conditions, limited policy, scoping of policy and limited development, and limited engagement. And then the second phase is more of policy development, refining the sections in the element and getting the element out to communities so that they have a chance to look at the information being written and be able to give their feedback and commentary. So the first phase, like I mentioned, was figuring out what are the existing communities or existing conditions in disadvantaged communities. And so SB 1000 mentions that there's two ways of finding out what a disadvantaged, or defining what a disadvantaged community is. The first is through the CalEnviro screen. All communities that rank in the 75 percentile or above, or the top 25 percentile of the CalEnviro screen may be considered for disadvantaged communities. And the other way is for identifying communities that are extremely low income by the California Department of Housing and Community Development Standards. And so what the CalEnviro screen, as some of you may know, is, has a few indicators. And the groups that it takes into account are exposure, environmental effects, sensitive populations, economic and socioeconomic factors. And underneath all those are what we considered. The red dots on the photograph that you're taking a look at or the visual are the disadvantaged communities that we identified. So we selected 39 EJ communities and 10 non-EJ communities for comparison purposes. So the legal requirements of SB 1000 are to address first, to reduce pollution exposure, improve air quality, promote public facilities, promote food access, promote safe and sanitary homes, and promote physical activity. However, it also encourages for jurisdictions to pay attention to what are the needs and priorities and programs that should be addressed to address disadvantaged or needs in disadvantaged communities, as well as to engage in public engagement or to do public engagement. So the first step was to look at the demographics. And because the other general plan elements divide communities or separate or distinguish communities by three groups, community, hamlet, and valley, we decided to implement this into the element. However, there's been concerns about calling communities disadvantaged or separating them in these categories, suggestion, suggesting that they might be, that the amount of poverty in these communities might be more than others. And so I think the name of Hamlet or Valley, it does not identify with community residents. But these are some of the statistics that we're looking at or some of the facts of the demographics. As you can see, there is, the highest population is the Hispanic population and white population. And in the valley category, the reason why you have the highest amount of white population is because it includes the East Porterville community. So we took notice of what are the education, education attainment of the communities. We also look at population ages. We compare them against the non-EJ communities. And of course, something that we expected was that we found that more English-speaking populations were located in non-EJ communities versus EJ communities. And also that non-EJ community or residents in non-EJ communities have higher education attainment. So some of the improvements and programs that we identified, we got to identify these points by looking at some of the community plans that Tulare County has already developed. Some, and community safety was a huge one. It's been uncovered that, sorry. It's, residents have identified that community safety is something that is concerning due to the low amount of infrastructure in these communities, including street lighting. And some have mentioned that surveillance too by the department, the sheriff department, is something that needs to be improved. Others are medical care access. We identified that in some of these communities, it's very difficult to, for these residents to reach public facilities due to the fact that they are located in incorporated communities. Local food markets, as some of you may know, it's, there is minimal amount of food markets in disadvantaged communities due to the zoning. But also, some of these communities are rural, and you're not going to have supermarkets that are going to cater to small populations. But some of the other issues that come about with food access is the amount of quality of fresh fruit, fresh fruit and vegetables that are available. Internet access is another one. With the COVID pandemic, there was a lot of commentary or anecdotal comments about people not having access to internet, students not being able to access their coursework, and community members not being able to work remotely for those that work in not, technical jobs. Community resources. A lot of the disadvantaged communities do not contain a community center as well as libraries. Animal control. This was something that was mentioned by previous people who have worked in disadvantaged communities who have been trying to do outreach. And just to go down below, public transportation. Although there has been an increase in availability of public transportation in disadvantaged communities, there's also the mention that sometimes they're either running late or the bus stops are not equipped for people to stand there during rainy season or during the hot summer. It's very hot and the benches are cement. So it's very difficult for people to stand by. Education levels. We're going to take a look at that in the next slide. And housing affordability as well. But as you can tell in the graphics, unemployment is high, particularly for the Latino and immigrant population. And the percent change in population is only going to perhaps increase that unemployment rate, especially as the COVID pandemic prolongs.
This data is from 2015, the MSA data?
Correct.
It could have significantly changed since then for a variety of reasons, right?
Correct. However, this is the latest data that we were able to find. So we tried to write from what we had.
Interesting to see what the pre-COVID employment, unemployment data was since 2015.
It'd be interesting to see it after COVID or during this time of COVID. So education percentile, we were using the CalEnviro screen indicator data to map out the census tracts where you have low education levels because this obviously impacts the opportunities that someone might have in terms of employment. We also were able to find information or data on census tracts where youth, the one that you're looking at on the bottom right corner, youth that are, have not been, are either not in school or unemployed. And so these are the areas that we mentioned should be targeted for more resources, more learning or programs allocated to ESL students, particularly because we see that education attainment is lower among Latino immigrants. And as mentioned, housing burden, housing affordability. What we noticed was that housing was more unaffordable for renters rather than owners. And obviously, those renters were high in Latino populations. So civic engagement. This is, as mentioned, something that we've not been able to work on in full detail or have not been able to execute or implement throughout many of the disadvantaged communities due to the challenges that have come up with the COVID pandemic. However, the advisory committee is working on strategies. And we've been coming up with best practices. We have also received suggestions from the Department of Justice Attorney General's Office, some of the strategies that we can pursue. And among those are to make the committee available to residents from communities located in disadvantaged communities, as well as make material available in various languages to be accessible for all. And we also have discussed about translation, making sure that there's translation at meetings, translation at workshops, as well as the material. Unfortunately, we're not able to translate the environmental justice element or background report that we have developed at this time. However, we're working on creating executive summaries to disseminate that information and to make community residents aware of what the county is doing in terms of environmental justice. And some more information about the general plan as well. As well, we have talked about an EJ ombudsman. This was an idea that was proposed by Commissioner McElroy. And it has gained favor with community members because an EJ ombudsman would be reliable or responsible for taking care of a lot of the civic or public engagement activities that we would propose. And with the low capacity for planners to be executing these strategies, it would be best for someone like an EJ ombudsman to be fully engaged with community. uh, it would be best for someone like an EJ ombudsman to be fully engaged with community residents. Linguistic isolation, um, I included this because there's a lot of, um, as you can see, some where some of the disadvantaged communities are located, we have community residents who do not speak English. And so for those residents, we need to be thinking about how can we engage with them um in a, in a, in a matter that works for them, in a matter that is uh, that caters to their needs. Um, and where, in a matter that they can perceive the information and be able to participate in planning processes more often. These are some of the languages uh that we cre- um collected data for. Some of the languages besides English that um, that of populations or for people that speak different languages, these are it. Um, and so it, it, it's just something that we need to be considering as we're creating a, a public um outreach material to make sure that these languages um or for residents who speak these languages, they're able to access material efficiently. Another section that we take a look at was crime prevention. It was not a requirement of SB 1000. However, it was included in the Sacramento EJ element. And particularly we, or we thought that it particularly was beneficial to address crime prevention uh due to the lack of uh infrastructure in many of the disadvantaged communities. And due to anecdotal experiences about people feeling unsafe or um not being able to exercise in the evenings due to fear of crime or fear of not being safe. So we wondered what were the factors that are contributing to crime? And how can we mitigate these so that community residents can feel more safe within their communities? So they can have community cohesion and um obviously not be so afraid of stepping outside. And some of the concerns that came up while reviewing this information was how does fear and how does not being outside um affect community residents? And the information that we found from literature was that there is a probability, um, as you can see on the diagram, that crime can, uh, it doesn't produce health effects. However, it can um be a, a vulnerability that, or a stressor that may worsen health conditions that may come upon pollution, that may come uh as a cause of pollution or other indicators. Um, the diagram below, you have uh Cutler or Rossi, which was one of the communities that was seen to have the most crime. So you have crime communities, starting from the left to least crime at Three Rivers on the right. And what we were noticing was that for the communities that had a lot of crime, there was a substantial amount of residential area within these communities and not a sufficient amount of amenities or public facilities, other resources for these community members to access. So it's, it becomes a stressor and it becomes something that could worsen conditions within disadvantaged communities. We were able to access or attain some data from the sheriff's department, although um there is a few data gaps that we have identified. However, this was data that we were able to attain from 2016 to 2019. And and as you can see, there is more crime that takes place in some of the environmental justice communities. However, there is a higher population in environmental justice communities rather than non-environmental justice communities. So um, however, the percent changes um are more drastic for non-EJ communities. And that's partly particularly because you have spikes. And as we'll see in the next slide, not a lot of crime will take place. And so when the pers- eh, percentage or the amount of crime changes, uh, you have a fluctuation. Some of, these are some of the diagrams, these are the percent changes uh of crime. And you have EJ communities at the top and non-EJ communities at the bottom. And as we can see, there is more fluctuation in personal crimes. Um, and the personal crimes include assault, homicide, rape and domestic violence. And the other crimes that we identified that might uh impact households, particularly family households, are disorderly conduct, drugs and um misdemeanors, family offenses, et cetera. 2018 for the number of potential impacts on household health, uh, we can see that there was a, a substantial amount of uh family offenses. And then at the bottom, uh, we see that there was a spike in family offenses as well for non-EJ communities. I would like to say that um we have received commentary from a few members of the committee that the, the framing of this section has been um perhaps geared towards um the fact that the environmental justice communities might be dangerous, but that was not the intent. Um, we only tried to understand what are the conditions that may be contributing to some of the crime? And through that understanding, um, what are the effects that it can have on fa- family households? And some, how can we mitigate these? Healthy food access, this is something um that was particularly important um to health of community residents, as well as business growth uh for communities. Uh, the diagram shows a contrast between population sizes in 2007 versus 2016. And as you can see, there is um an increase in some of the rural areas or rural communities that we're looking at. Um, and this pattern only makes it more difficult for people to have more access to the resources that they need or to have um I guess, being from um close proximity to food stores and food markets. Um, so some of the things that we evaluated were um population increases as well as how this affected people on SNAP, receiving SNAP and EBT benefits. Uh, some of the obstacles of healthy food, um, some, some of the uh what, what the food system here in Tulare looks like. Because obviously Tulare County has been recognized as a producer of agriculture and lots of food. However, we noticed that a lot of that food is outbound and not a lot of food is coming inbound. These diagrams were um used to take a look at some of the trends on SNAP and EBT. And as you can see, um, 2006, it starts picking up. Uh, you can see a heavy incline, uh, which aligns with um somewhat of what we were looking at in this diagram, uh, with the population increases. We also identified where the area, which census tracts have food stamps. Um, and this was uh something that we were interested in because it could maybe give way to where food markets can be implemented, where um food pantries can also be allocated, uh, where Food Link, um, a, the organization can help or partner with county and other agencies to provide services uh needed. We also uh took a look at where the location of all the supermarkets, all the flea markets, um, farmers markets and fast food restaurants, trying to understand what were some of the patterns that we noticed in disadvantaged communities. Um, we, we know that obesity is a concern among community residents in disadvantaged communities. And we wanted to understand if this was attributed to the quality of food that these um community members are partaking in. Um, what are their patterns? Um, is this a lack of uh, is it due to the lack of uh food stores in their local communities that they are consuming unhealthy foods? Or is it for another reason? So we were trying to look at, um, is also if there's transportation that can um lead to some of these communities or some of these locations uh where people can shop for food. We also took a look at other data uh from the Food Atlas or um Food Research Atlas. This is from 2015, this is the latest data they have. Um, but we were able to create ma- these maps and as well as others um of where uh census tracts with low access, low income populations that are um within one mile of supermarket. Um, we also mapped for children populations within one mile supermarkets. And um, the percentage, as you can see, for some of the areas where people or community members do not have access to local food stores perhaps is the north and south um corners of the county. We were able, also able to create maps uh for community members without vehicles, who do not have access to vehicles and for seniors. Physical activity, we wanted to um, so we know that food, as well as uh fears of crime or uh other components in communities affect how much someone might partake in physical activity. Uh, but we wanted to um dig deeper and understand what are the conditions in disadvantaged communities and um how can we promote physical activity to decrease um adverse health effects? And what we uncovered was that a lot of the parks um are located within incorporated communities, as you can see in the map. And what um, what you see in the center, the green, is the park itself. And then we included buffers around it just to see um if any of the disadvantaged communities um were within those buffers. And some of them are and some, uh, but the majority are not. And we also wanted to analyze what transport, if there was the availability of transportation uh for these parks was, um, are community residents able to get to them? Is it a convenience or inconvenience? Uh, how long are they able to stay in those parks uh due to the distance that they live from them? Um, and we also wanted to understand tree cover um and greening, how that was in communities. And so we attained data for each census track and we mapped it out. As you can see, commute census tracts on the valley floor have minimal amount of uh trees, tree cover in some of these communities. And maybe perhaps that's because a lot of the land is allocated to agriculture. Um, but this also has effects on active transportation. Uh, in summer months when there is no tree cover and people are trying to get from place, one place to another, it might be uh particularly discouraging to have to walk in the heat with no cover. Um, we, we also noticed that um it had an impact on affordability of um household expenses. Uh, during hot summer months, there is um a surge in uh utility costs for AC units running. Uh, so we wanted to think about what are the impacts that some of these communities might experience as climate change um progresses? And how does this im- um, how does in, this impact community resiliency? Um, and quality of life? So the, the table below, you can see, on the left, you can see some of the um, the acreage, um acres per um per 1,000 residents. And it, it was interesting to see, I think, the Tulare County unincorporated. It had the higher amount of um acres per 1,000 residents. But as you can see in, in the map, there, a lot of these communities, if the disadvantaged communities that we've outlined, the um, they're not really, they don't have parks in them. So we're trying to understand what other sources of greenery or um recreational space uh that data was considering. Uh, this data was uh attained by the Parks Department, Recreation and Parks Department. As mentioned, we took a note of active transportation. Uh, we wanted to see where community residents are traveling by foot or by bike um and other modes. Uh, and as you can see, uh, that usually takes place in incorporated communities or cities or areas that have higher density as well as more resources. Um, and that might be due to the close proximity of these facilities. Uh, for disadvantaged communities, it might be unpractical to try to walk to other places. Um, and we also took note of unhealthy weight, how this might impact unhealthy weight for, particularly for children. Uh, but we also took into account uh for adults, male and female. Um, and as you can see, some of the uh Hispanic, black and Native American populations are the ones that are affected most by these conditions. We also wanted to understand if it was safe for community residents to um, to walk in communities or, or some of the um, or bicycle um in around as a mode of transportation. So we wanted to uncover where the accidents or collisions take place. And we acquired some of that data. And this is only for disa- um, this is only for unincorporated communities. Public facilities, um, we went through a lot of the community plans as well as general plan to uncover where public facilities were located, if they're for particularly uh within close proximity of disadvantaged communities or environmental justice communities. And we mapped it out. Uh, we took into consideration libraries, uh veteran buildings, uh memorial buildings, as well as uh cultural centers, um, and the community centers, et cetera. And this is a huge area, or this is an area of improvement that a lot of community residents have um made note of um in commentary in previous of s- public engagement that RMA has conducted. The, the map that you're taking a look at here is some of the health clinics or clinics and other health uh facilities. And as you can see, um, they're mainly centered around incorporated cities. And uh, this is particularly difficult for community residents in rural communities or in the EJ communities. Uh, because there is also not, the, the transportation system is not connected. And so it might be very difficult for a community member in Allensworth to travel up to Visalia um when the transportation is not connected, as well as the distance. And um expenses were also something that um was noted. Uh, sometimes community residents will not go to clinics or not go to hospitals due to the expenses that they incur. Uh, there's also language barriers, sorry, I'm, I think I'm going up backwards. Um, or from bottom up, uh, language barriers. There was a lot of concerns from community residents. Um, that was noted in public engagement about not having the materials they need um in their specific language, as well as doctors and nurses not being able to speak the language that our um citizenry speak. Cultural sensi- sensitivity, uh, this was something um also that was noted about people's personal decisions or customs, ways of dealing with um injures. decisions or customs, ways of dealing with injuries. This was particularly a point that was addressed for the LGBTQ community, how they feel that perhaps they are accepted. However, when it comes down to other topics such as diseases or other choices, it's a matter that they feel they are not able to express or speak boldly about. These are the facilities for the Sheriff and Fire Department. And we wanted to underlay this with crime index data that we mapped for each census This was something that particularly, or this is something that relates to a lot of the other topics that we were addressing, as mentioned, like physical activity, crime. Because community residents have mentioned that there is low surveillance, or they feel that there is not enough surveillance throughout their communities. And because there is substations that are located not near disadvantaged communities or environmental justice communities, it can make it more difficult or dispatch response time might be longer for environmental justice communities. Response time is something that we have not been able to analyze, however. It's the data that we are seeking to attain from the Sheriff's Department. And we will, that's a data gap that we will be addressing in the future. Obviously, the red areas are areas with more crime and areas that are lighter have less Pollution burden, we took a look at the air quality pollution, pesticides and toxic release facilities. Some of the levels, we know that there, or the San Joaquin Central Valley is not a, the most clean or air, it does not have the most clean air quality. But we try to understand how this might impact environmental justice communities. This is the Cal Environment Screen, which considers ozone, PM2, PM 2.5, diesel PM, toxic releases, traffic, drinking water, cleanup sites, groundwater threats, solid waste sites, and hazardous waste sites. We also mapped data for diesel PM percentile, which community or which census tracts have the highest. And surprisingly, or not surprisingly, but areas that have the highest diesel PM is Visalia, north of Visalia, near Goshen, where we have a lot of industry. So anywhere there, where there's industry, it's higher. Pesticide percentile, Tulare County is, experiences high levels or community members experience pesticides regularly throughout the year due to spraying of agricultural fields. And then we also tried to analyze, how does this impact the health of community residents? We took into account emergency visits due to asthma, heart attack, and low birth weight. We also mapped all the facilities. We gathered data for all the toxic release facilities and facilities that also release pollution. We also wanted to map facilities that are on the CARB GHG release report. So we mapped that out. And we underlaid it with toxic release percentile. So you have underneath that areas that are experiencing the highest pollution burden. And we also have data or data for all the facilities and the chemical levels that they release. Safe and sanitary homes. We took a look at some of the surveys that have been previously conducted. A lot of these surveys were included in the housing element. However, we wanted to particularly pay attention to the disadvantaged, or the environmental justice communities that we are focusing on and the housing structure, how households or overcrowding in households, and as well as what are the cost burdens by income and So on the left, we have conditions. We notify, or we got data for the percentile of housing structures that were sound, deteriorated, and dilapidated. And then we took notice of the housing conditions in terms of when units were built, thinking that units built before 1980 might perhaps have lead or other chemicals, might not have enough maintenance that could cause health or adverse effects for households. We analyzed cost burden by income and race, as mentioned. So we took into account each category of race for owners and renters. And we took into account the HCD, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, limitation or requirements or sets of what it means to be low income, extreme income, and severely low income. So this is the last slide, something that we have been trying to, or we have completed the Environmental Justice Background Report. And we have now shared it with resident or members of the Environmental Justice Committee. And they are reviewing the element right now. And we're waiting for feedback and commentary. We're also, something else that we're working on are the logistics of the committee. We're assembling a charter for some of the responsibilities of various members of the Environmental Justice Committee, as well as some of the strategies that we can pursue amid the COVID pandemic and what those implementation measures would be. How do we implement those? Giving way to our ability to assess how much that would cost. Some of the next steps that we are looking to do to progress the project is, as mentioned, provide more feedback or community residents feedback, identify the data gaps, what we need to look, take a closer look at, as well as some of the outreach material, what we can start creating now to make sure that community residents are aware of the environmental justice, they are aware of the general plan, what the element would consist of so that they can participate more efficiently. And we are also looking to research grants to fund some of these efforts, the education and technical assistance efforts. With that, I conclude my presentation and I'll take any questions.
Before we get into questions, I do want to say I really do appreciate every effort Arlen's made. He comes to us by way of HCD himself. The Department of Housing and Community Development funded him to be here for this last year. And he's really stepped up to help us create the document as it is. And he's had to work through a lot of tough times here with COVID. And he's really, his passion to work in some of our communities, we've taken out Metheny Tract as we've been working on the grant with them, and he's been very, very helpful in every effort he's done. And I am actually really impressed that we've been able to accomplish so much over this last year and get to this point. You know, if you do know me, I wish we were a little bit further along, but that's just my personality. And with COVID, I'm trying not to let COVID slow us down in any way, shape, or form. But the reality is 75% of this document needs to have come through workshops with the citizenry of Tulare County, which even the Metheny Tract, even, we were having lower percentile, percentage of the population showing up to our meetings. With Zoom, it's even much lower. So it's, we need to begin to create the mechanisms to have broader outreach. And we haven't quite, quite got there yet. But again, it's definitely an impressive document. And outside of Sacramento, I think we'll be one of the first ones in the lower San Joaquin Valley to really, really have something that fits and ties in with SB 1000. One other thing that wasn't necessarily mentioned here, the county, after 2018, if we update two elements, has to have an SB 1000 Environmental Justice Report. And we can incorporate it by reference. The preferred method is to actually have an element update. And we had intended to do this through a two-phased approach like Sacramento. But the reality is without the outreach, we really can't, really can't do that. So we'll end up having to take this forward as all one, one element. So I just wanted to add that. And again, we really do appreciate the effort, Arlen. Arlen will be leaving us here very, very shortly. We do have somebody from Cal Poly coming in, hopefully within the next few weeks to replace him. But those are some big shoes to fill. So thank you, Arlen.
That means he's going to miss you, Arlen.
Definitely.
Do you have any questions for Arlen, any comments?
I just want to make sure, can we get a hard copy of this when it's ready?
Yes. And this is just the background information. But yeah, we'll definitely, when the, when our committees kind of got a draft, then we'll definitely be able to continue to come back with changes as this moves forward. This is going to be one of the, kind of taking the same approach we did with the general plan where we actually do workshops throughout the process, just to make sure that everybody is aware of what we're doing.
Who's on, who's on the committee, Aaron?
Go ahead, Arlen. If you want to name all the committee members?
Oh, yes. Blanca Escobedo from Leadership Council. We previously had Seamus Garan from Self-Help Enterprises. And we now have Diego Panigawa from Self-Help Enterprises. We have Nayamine Martinez from the, or Central Valley Environmental Justice Network. We have Pedro Hernandez from Autobahn California. And we have Commissioner McElroy and myself from RMA. And that is currently.
He's going to mention my name at some point.
And Aaron Bach. And previously, Dave Bryant.
And we've had some other members, Health and Human Services, Food Link. And I have a feeling over time, it's going to be a very fluid committee as people move around. But I think the real core of that is to make sure that leadership and self-help are involved and, you know, HHSA. So it's been a little bit tougher with them because of all the, they have to work through all the pandemic stuff themselves. But I think moving forward, there's that core team, sure, that's going to be able to accomplish this in the next couple of years.
So there are about, what, 58 counties in California?
Right.
Is that right? How many have embarked on this project?
How many what?
How many have embarked on this type of analyses?
I'd say about, well, it's tough to say how many people have actually completed an environmental justice element. I mean, it's got to be a handful.
Yeah.
It's a requirement, though, so they're going to have to at some point, right?
They update their general plan. Just to give you a little bit of anecdotal discussion about this, Fresno County wanted to update their general plan a couple of years ago. Did not necessarily go through the workshop process. I think they were trying to implement some of the policies of SIGMA. And so they just went through the planning commission, the board, and did a couple pages on the actual environmental justice element because they were updating the whole thing. And the environmental justice community got out there and stalled out the whole process till they, they had something more in place. They still only incorporated, incorporated by reference that document. So I'm in these varying stages of this. I know Imperial County and San Bernardino County were held up in the process. So I don't know if they've ever been able to really complete it because the Attorney General wanted them to do more outreach. So I'd say not too many people have been able to.
Is there a deadline that the state has laid out, a deadline? For all counties?
Yeah, the law is, as of 2018, if you update two general plan elements, you have to have this in place. You have to have a report and you can incorporate it by reference, kind of like our ACFP, or you make an element. And from everything I've heard from folks who work in the nonprofit sides, they preferred that we do an element. So.
One of the things that I, in my background, you know, we've done reports like this in my background in history. And my boss would always say, this is great data. I like what I see. What are you going to do with it? So the question then is, I mean, if there's funding or incentives, you know, that are attached to this from the state, where Tulare County would be ranked amongst, that's why I said it, 58 counties, has the worst problem of all of them in this area, this area, this area. Do you get funding to fix the problems?
To answer that, yes and no. No, there is no, yet. I'll say not yet. You know they will eventually. There is no direct funding tied to SB 1000. However, I know in the future, if we are not able to, especially when you get into some of the more emergency-related funding, whether it's for wildfire or for SIGMA or drought, if we don't have some of these things in place, I think it's going to start hurting us for all those counties who don't, don't go through this process. You will be hurt in the future by not having it. So that's, I think Sacramento was seeing that, and that's why they took that phased approach, they wanted to get something out there. But I know all the community plans we worked on, all the census, all the data we put into those community plans for the ATP projects, it makes it real easy for Johnson over there to cut and paste that information into the ATP so that they know exactly where we sit. So this is the type of information they'll want to see. And we'll be able to actually say it. Because you know, San Francisco, in LA, this information is at the tips of their fingers and they can just put it in the documents. We, you know, struggle to have to do all this research ourselves. So to answer your question, not yet, but, but you know, it's.
What was my next comment? This would be good data then when you do your community plans, right? You can loop, loop back to the community plan you've already done and make sure that you've got some of these elements in there, right?
Well, right. And we drew a lot from our community plans, but yes, this goes, this would go to the next, next level, definitely.
Lot of data there. Good job.
Impressive amount of data. And you did those maps, Arlen?
Yeah.
So Arlen learned GIS while he, while he was sitting there working. And not only did he learn it, he was able to produce some pretty nice maps that I'm sure Johnson's even a little jealous of over there.
Do you now, do you now go after data that's post 2015? Or how do you, how do you do that to update all this?
Well, I think as we get the census update here, I mean, this is not necessarily census questions. But yeah, I think there will be more data available as we go through that process.
And I think this is a really important process to go through. And some of the things that we're recommending, like why I recommended the EJ ombudsman, and not just in the traditional sense of let's, you know, do a scorecard of how badly people are doing or how badly government is responding. But it's an opportunity with that position and with this committee and process in general to get ahead of some of the requirements and enforcement actions that are coming. So like AB 1628 talks about. So like AB 1628 talks about how to, the public is supposed to have meaningful participation in the EJ process. And we just heard from Arlen with these demographics that some of these disadvantaged communities don't have the capacity, and I'm not, you know, specifying what type of capacity just yet, but they don't have the capacity for one reason or another to participate meaningfully. So, you know, whether the internet or, or education level, or, or language barriers, or whatever it might be. So this element is going to help address some of that. I mean, if you look at the water system for Seville that the supervisors and, and county put out, or, or got together recently over the past, you know, number of months or year or whatever it was, that's a big step in, you know, what might be addressed in some ways in an EJ element. Tulare County is much bigger than Visalia and Tulare, and we can't ever forget that. And so this, I think, is going to help address that first by bringing awareness, knowing what's out there, and making sure people understand and can effectively exercise their rights to be considered, you know, a full Tulare County resident.
Well, we get a lot of data in the real estate business for metropolitan statistical area and for Visalia, Porterville, and Tulare. And it's interesting because when we try to get higher-end retailers in here, the MSA data always messes us up because Visalia can't look at itself and say, well, you know, I'm number three in, in, in the country. You have to, you have, and no, 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 I'm not making any detrimental comments anyway. When you add in Porterville or Tulare, the numbers go way down. So when you look at statistical area data, and you want a Trader Joe's as an example, we've wanted Trader Joe's for 10 years, I've been chasing these guys. Every time we look at the MSA data, it's because of the other outlying towns. If you just put Visalia by itself on the data, it, it, we would come close to qualifying. But it's, so, so this is good because this, this will really highlight a lot of the areas in this particular category of things called environmental justice that we need to fix. And that's why I asked about the 2015 data, because when we move forward, there's a lot of changes that have gone on since the last three or four years, big time.
Yeah.
I'm curious to know what those changes are.
Well, that's why it's a shame that we're shortchanging the census, because it's gonna affect places like Tulare County the most in the entire country.
And I would hope that we'd get some water allocation preferences here as well, in terms of clean water.
After November, what happens?
Money is to help clean up the water and get more water.
Yeah.
I think that would be a major priority for the state.
Well, any more questions for Arlen?
Great piece of work.
Did a fantastic job, and I think that, you know, I really think Aaron's gonna miss him. So we'll see what the ramp up is like with the next person. But I, I, from the time that I did spend working with you, Arlen, I really appreciated it, and this is a, a lot of work, so you did a good job.
Where do you return to, Arlen?
Marine County.
Marine County, oh my gosh.
It's a little different.
The land of milk and honey now, aren't you?
Thank you.
In the essence of time, I'll say that we can probably pass on the director's report.
Okay.
That was the director's report. And so I, I did want to mention just one thing, though. Yesterday, the Board of Supervisors did pass our SB 743 VNT Guidelines, General Plan Amendment. So we will be the first county in the state of California to have approved our SB 743 implementation. So I wanted to thank staff again for being able to get that done, because that was quite a quick effort, but it was a good effort. And, and with SB 1000 and all this stuff, we'll work on in the future with the, with Sigma and everything else. I'm hoping within the next couple of years that we can close up all the loops with the state legislation regarding these mandates that are coming down, even though our general plan just got done in 2012, all of a sudden, you know, by the end of 2022, 2024, we'll basically have updated most of our general plan all over again, so. But that's what they want, that's what we'll do.
Okay. Your report? Any comments, items for my fellow commissioners?
Yeah, I have some exciting news in terms of the CCPCA conference for this year. We're gonna do a Zoom conference on October the 16th, a Friday. We're gonna have two presentations in the morning, and then we're gonna break in the afternoon, and we're hoping to add a Zoom presentation on planning commission training for the afternoon. And then we're gonna get together at about 5:00 or so for what we're calling a Happy Hour Roundtable. And we're gonna invite the whole state, all the commissioners, to come in on this and just talk about whatever they want to. And we're really excited about this because we think it's a, well, one thing, we're, we're also gonna waive the dues for all 58 counties for the year of 2020. And we think that by doing that, well, we, you know, because we're not having a live in-person conference, that we can invite more people to participate, you know, via Zoom. So I think this is really an exciting development, and everybody can attend. There's no reason not to, and I think we're gonna get to know each other better as planning commissioners, and we're gonna learn about what we're doing for 2021 also.
Are you gonna invite the llama? You know that llama that shows up in random Zoom conferences?
Well, no. We're, well, we're actually gonna do the session from Humboldt County. It's gonna be very interesting.
What does it date, yeah?
It's October 16th, and it's a Friday. And we're, we're gonna present some really important speakers on what this year, 2020, has presented to every planning commission in the state of California. And that's what the theme is gonna be of the morning program. We're also gonna have a virtual tour of Humboldt County, which will be very interesting. And then we'll break for the afternoon after our planning commission training session. And then we'll reconvene at Happy Hour with an open forum where people from all over the state can ask any questions they'd like to.
All right, anything else?